We want to welcome you to our October Monthly School Board Meeting. Thank you for coming, thank you for being here. And we want to stand just now and have a moment of silence and then have our Pledge of Allegiance. Amen. Next, we would ask our representatives from Fairview Elementary, Kensley Goddard, and Hudson Calvert, and Aubrey Calvert to come forward and lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. All right.
I think it's our new pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Please be seated. Can we give them a round of applause for doing such a great job? They may be delighted. Ms. Danny, we would come to our roll call next, please.
Randy Early Howard.
Here.
Brian King. Joe Lindsey.
Here.
John Lowe.
Here.
Erica Moore. Chris Pass.
Here.
Phil Porter.
Here.
You have two absent, but you still have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Danny. We called our meeting to order just now. I want you guys to know as we call our meeting to order, immediately following our recognitions and showcase, we're going to move up our student speakers this evening because they have ballgames and activities this evening. So with your approval of that as well, immediately following our recognitions and showcase moment, we're going to recognize our student speakers. Dr. Rich?
Yeah, October is National Principals Month. We have a very hardworking, dedicated group of principals in our district who create a positive learning environment and supports student success here in Blount County. We are pleased to honor those principals tonight, and so if those principals, head principals, please come up to the podium or come forward, please. Thank you. Principals, principals, you may leave if you have other business to conduct. I know parking spots are going to be hard to find over at Heritage tonight. Up next, we have, we want to congratulate the ECCA Middle School Baseball Team for their successful season in the spring. I'd like to ask Stan Burnett to come to the podium.
And we enjoy that. I would like to welcome Coach Kidd and the Eagleton College and Career Baseball Team. Outstanding season. Blount County Champions, played in several other tournaments, highly successful within like the school-sponsored teams they played, they were 20 and 3. Fun to watch play. Welcome in to new facility the right way. We're going to ask you guys to come up, you coaches, we're going to let Coach Kidd say just a word. He didn't know that. Come on, guys. Mr. Dowd, the chair, he will have been dealt with in his box, he's invited, and he'll recall. And we have, we have presented them a banner. We're going to let Coach Kidd say a word, and then they're going to introduce themselves. And like I told me, just when did that gun thing next year, too? Go ahead, Coach Kidd, come right here. He's a real estate agent, he's not shy.
That's right. Yeah, just want to thank everybody for their support, parents that are here, couldn't do it without them. Coach Hart, who's not able to be here tonight, he's with the cross-country team. It's his program, and he started this thing up, you know, three, four years ago, and is doing a heck of a job. And his focus is to put the focus on the middle school program, to build up the high school program when they're ready to get there. So it's all about these guys, they did all the work, they put everything in, and like Stan said, 20 and 3 on the year, pretty tough to beat. So congratulations to these guys.
As always, parents, if you come for recognition and you're interested in the business of the school system, feel free to say, but if you have things to do, it's not rude at all to walk out, so appreciate you guys doing that if you want. So thanks, Stan. Next business is, we really, you know, our principals work hard, our teachers work hard, and we do the best we can to meet all their needs, but we do need extra support, and that's where BCEF steps in. So we're so grateful for all the grants that come out of BCEF. As you know, the Tropfen Education, the Gala, there's all kinds of events that they do to help raise money for our students. So at this time, I would like to ask the Executive Director Renee Poole to come up to the podium, please.
Good evening. We are excited to announce that we have awarded a record-breaking $90,000 in mini grants to Blount County Schools for the 2025-26 Academic Year. This marks the largest amount distributed through the program, a milestone that has been made possible by the support of our district leaders and the generosity of our community. The Mini Grant Program allows educators to apply directly for funds, providing resources that go beyond the traditional classroom budget to enhance their students' educational environment. This year's grant support initiatives include STEM, literacy, social-emotional health, related arts, and many more. This investment represents our community's commitment to education and to the future of Blount County. We are proud to be growing a program that breathes life into educator ideas, turning innovative vision into reality for the benefit of our students. So on behalf of BCEF, I want to say thank you for your continued support and collaboration on providing our teachers with the tools they need to create vibrant and engaging learning environments. And with that, I would like to invite our Board of Directors up for a check presentation.
Thank you, BCEF. And next, we would come to our student representation speakers this evening, and I believe we're going to begin the seating with Ms. Ella from Heritage High School.
Good afternoon. Congratulations to our 18 current seniors and two current juniors that have been recognized as AP Scholars, including four with distinction, three with honors, and two as AP Capstone Diploma candidates. AP Scholar Juniors are Taylor Crowe, Sarah Masinho, and Jefferson Bryant. AP Scholar Seniors are Waylon Briesley, Dylan Burgess, Lakely Bird, Nathan Ewen, Sophia Gilson, Laura Heck, Miles Hope, William Jones, Reese Parton, Kat Rice, Eli Roland, Katie Stephenson, Kaitlyn Stowers, Ashton Weaver, Stephen Webb, and Isabella Wells. AP Capstone Diploma candidates are Sophia Gilson and Miles Hope. Congratulations to Nathan Ewen for his recognition by the National Merit Scholarship as a commended student. To be commended student, Nathan had to meet the National Index Score on the PSAT of 210. He missed the semifinals list by four points. Congratulations to our football homecoming candidates, including Princess Hadley Palmer and Queen Alicia Byrd. Homecoming candidates worked with their sponsoring clubs to raise over $25,000 to support scholarships and money towards their sponsoring club, team, or program. Lady Malia Volleyball finished as District Two AAA Regular Season Champs with a 17-4 record, and will be hosting the district tournament on Monday through Wednesday during fall break. 2025 Teacher of the Year is Mr. Justin Lang, who has been at Heritage for 24 years, teaching everything from Algebra I to AP Calculus. Ms. Kinsey Sherman is in her third year as an AV Production Teacher, and is the 2025 Rookie Teacher of the Year. Congratulations to both of them.
Thank you, Ms. Ella. Next, we would have, from Samuel Everett School of Innovation, Ms. Stella Campbell.
Good evening. We're excited to announce our Teacher of the Year, Colleen Canal. Ms. Canal earned this recognition because she has led her students to recent exceptional levels of academic achievement, guided her classes to strong growth scores on recent state assessments, took the initiative to teach Cecy's first AP English class, AP Seminar, last year, and expanded our AP offerings this year by additionally teaching AP Research. Ms. Canal teaches a large load, including 10th, 11th, and 12th Grade English, ACT English, AP Seminar, and AP Research, as well as provides leadership beyond the classroom by leading the Senior Service Club, the Beta Club, and coaching the elementary cheerleading team. Ms. Canal is loved by her colleagues and, most importantly, her students. We are also excited to announce that we are a Level V Growth School for the second year in a row. We could not achieve this if it wasn't for the hard work and dedication of our teachers, parents, and students. We would like to thank Blount County Education Foundation for funding four teacher grants. Mr. Carroll is very excited about getting history maps that will cover all of ancient history, post-classical world history, and contemporary world history. Ms. Canfield is excited to use art to support mental health, and Mr. Stalsworth is excited to have trout in the classroom. And Ms. Funch is making sure basic needs are being met by creating a community closet. We also would like to celebrate some of our student athletes. Middle schooler Brian Williams for being a finalist in the Blount County Middle School Tennis Tournament. Madison Kerr continues to shave time off of her cross-country time and improved her personal best time by over two minutes. Blair Davis finished 11th out of 238 runners at the recent race at Asher Park. We're also very proud of our senior golfer Lila Campbell for qualifying for the State Golf Tournament for the fourth year in a row. We're also looking forward to tomorrow for our zoo field trip. It is a school-wide event designed to bring together students and families, aligning with our belief that school, staff, and families should be a team and always support each other for the good of the children in our care. Additionally, the purpose of this trip is not only to give students the opportunity to enjoy an engaging day outside the classroom, but also to provide meaningful hands-on learning experiences. Special education classes at the zoo will focus on animal habits and behaviors, which directly support our curriculum and reinforces concepts students are studying in science. Our school is unique as our ability to extend learning beyond the classroom walls and include families in that process. This field trip is structured as a family event, giving parents and guardians the chance to learn alongside their children and experience firsthand the value of what we are teaching. It also helps strengthen the school-to-home connection, which is an important part of our culture. We are very proud of our staff, students, and families, and are grateful for the continued support of the board. For more information about our school, please visit our website at samuelleverittschool.com or on social media under Samuel Everett School. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stella. Next, our student speaker from Wigan Boyne High School, Parker Seis.
For homecoming this year, there was 25 clubs and teams that were represented. Together, they raised over $50,000. Blaine Bell was crowned Homecoming Queen. She represented the softball team. Our first annual Goves, Goblins, and Goody's Trunk or Treat is on October 21st, 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock PM at William Blount. Want to say congratulations to Bruce Sudrith, Jordan Conley, Holly Morgan, Michelle Cleba, and Elise Harris for receiving the BCEF grant winners. Today is Custodian Appreciation Day, so we want to shout out Randall McKenzie and Perry Cameron for all of the amazing work that they do at William Blount. Skills USA earned first-place chapter award at the Tennessee Valley Fair, which is the top overall chapter in the area. Emily Potts was selected as National FFA Officer. She'll be representing our school and our community on national stage. In the Art Department, Lilibelle Dixon won Best Mixed Media in Show at the Tennessee Valley Fair. Elena Kersey got third place for 11th grade painting. Six art students have been selected for Plain Air Smokies at Tremont, working one-on-one with professional painters. Lady Goves Volleyball are Blount County champs, first time since 2019. The score, or the season record, is 30 and 1. District Coach of the Year is Kendra Swafford. And all district honors, the first team, Eliza Hicks, Peyton Corral, Ella Reed; second team, Caitlin Husband and Elise Ferguson; honorable mention, Blakely Stewart. Special awards were given to Eliza Hicks for District MVP, Peyton Corral, Hitter of the Year, Elise Ferguson, Blocker of the Year, and Ella Reed, Sophomore of the Year. And of course, tonight is the Battle of the Bell, so come see William Blount reclaim our bell.
Thank you, Parker. Next, we would come to public comment on items on our agenda, and we have none tonight. Okay? Next item I would come to is a motion to set and approve the Consent Agenda. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of setting that consent agenda, if you'd let that be known by saying aye. Aye. Consent agenda is set. Next, I would ask for a motion to set and approve tonight's meeting agenda. A motion and a second. All in favor of setting tonight's agenda, let that be known by saying aye.
Thank you. And the first item on our agenda this evening is discussion and possible action regarding naming Fairview Elementary Gymnasium in honor of Jim Compton in recognition of his significant contribution to the school and community. I would like to ask for a motion for that, please. Have a motion and a second. All in favor of that discussion? Let it be known by saying aye. Aye. And I'd like to recognize Phil Porter on that now. Bill?
I personally had the great experience of working with Jim Compton for four years at Fairview. He wasn't the principal during my four years there, but I felt like he was the cornerstone of the school. Longtime Blount County School teacher, coach, and school board member, Bill Paget, told me the following about Jim, and I quote, "I would like to say James was a great coach. His teams always had great sportsmanship and were well-disciplined and prepared for games. We had several great games between Fairview and Wallen Middle." Bill went on to say, "It was a pleasure to coach against James and to serve with him on the Blount County School Board. Students were his first priority." And now, Mr. Burnett, would you come up and say a few words about this?
You could write a lot of stuff down about Jim, but there's not a large enough notebook to write all the positive things he did. Mr. Porter and I, one day, as many of you all come in, drop in, one day, we were talking on how things are getting better and everything for teachers, and Jim's name came up. And we just pretty much right there decided, let's bring this up. Talked to Mr. Merritt, who I asked to come on up right now. I'm not going to steal his thunder, but I'd just like to say, Jim, if you ever had the privilege of talking to him, no matter what you were going through, you always felt better after you talked to him.
I tried to write a few things down because I had a lot to say about Mr. Compton. Mr. Ridge and members of the board, I stand before you today not only as the current principal of Fairview Elementary, but as one of the countless individuals whose life was shaped by a truly remarkable educator, Mr. Jim Compton. It is my great honor to propose that the Fairview Elementary Gymnasium be officially named the Jim Compton Gymnasium in lasting tribute to a man who dedicated nearly his entire adult life to the students, families, and schools of our community. James Edward Compton was born on October 1st, 1946, and passed away on March 5th, 2023. He is lovingly remembered by his wife of 50 years, Sharon Bradford Compton, his son, Eric Compton, and many other devoted family members. Mr. Compton spent his entire teaching career at Fairview Elementary from 1975 until his retirement in 2003. He began coaching girls' basketball in 1976, a role that he fulfilled with dedication and heart for many years. Even after his coaching tenure ended, he continued to be a presence at our games, running the clock or keeping the scorebook until 2019. That kind of sustained involvement is rare, and it speaks volumes. He was a phenomenal teacher, deeply respected and admired by generations of students, myself included. I had the privilege of sitting in his social studies class in 1989, and I can say with confidence that he not only taught us about history, he lived it, he modeled it, and he inspired us to be part of it. Beyond the classroom and the basketball court, Mr. Compton's influence extended into leadership and advocacy, as Mr. Burnett just mentioned. He was a lifetime member of the Blount County Education Association and served as their chief negotiator for 16 years, always standing firmly on behalf of educators and students alike. After retiring from teaching, he continued to serve public education, this time as a member of this very board, where he served with distinction for eight years. In 2017, he was among the first individuals inducted into the Blount County Teachers' Hall of Fame, a well-deserved recognition for a lifetime of service in education. Naming the Fairview Gymnasium in his honor is more than a gesture, it is a statement of gratitude. It is a message to our students that service, commitment, and kindness matter. It is a reminder that great educators leave legacies far beyond the classroom walls. On behalf of the Fairview Elementary community, we respectfully request that the board approve this proposal to name our gymnasium the Jim Compton Gymnasium. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration.
Board members, are there any others that need to make a comment or discussion? Then I would ask for a motion to approve naming the Fairview Elementary Gymnasium in honor of Jim Compton. Have a motion and a second. Let's let that be approved by roll call vote. Ms. Danny, if we could, please.
Randy Early Howard, Joe Lindsay, John Love, Chris Pass, Phil Porter.
Thank you, Ms. Danny. Next on our agenda for this evening is discussion and possible action regarding a budget increase for public school safety grant provided by the State of Tennessee Fund 141, $216,904.52. I'd like to ask for a motion to discuss, please. Motion. Have a motion and a second. All in favor of that? Would you let it be known by saying aye? Aye. Okay. Are there any discussion or questions regarding that grant? Then I would ask for a motion to approve the budget increase for public school safety grant provided by the State of Tennessee Fund 141. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Danny, would you give us a roll call to that as well, please?
Joe Lindsay, John Love, Chris Pass, Phil Porter, Randy Early Howard.
Thank you, Ms. Danny. Item number three on our agenda this evening is discussion and possible action regarding a resolution for the Blount County Chief Financial Officer, Brian Baldwin, for accepting the additional responsibilities of temporary chief financial officer for the Blount County Board of Education. I'd like to ask for a motion to discuss that, please. Have a motion and a second. All in favor of that discussion? Let it be known by saying aye. Okay. Now, are there any questions or discussion? I would like to ask for a motion to approve that resolution to be forwarded on to county commission on behalf of Blount County Chief Financial Officer, Brian Baldwin, for accepting the additional responsibilities of temporary chief financial officer with the Blount County Board of Education. Have a motion? We need a second. Have a motion and a second. Ms. Danny, if you would do that by roll call vote for us as well, please.
Joe Lindsay, John Love, Chris Pass, Phil Porter, Randy Early Howard.
Thank you, Ms. Danny. Next, we would come to comments from the Blount County Education Association. Ms. Rebecca?
Across Tennessee, the Advisory Committee on Innovations in K-12 Education, what many call the Freedom to Teach Committee, is examining issues such as school calendar and state testing requirements that will shape our schools for years to come. Their work is not just about one bill, but it's about the kind of classrooms we want for our children and the kind of future we want for our community. At its heart, freedom to teach means giving educators the trust and flexibility to do what we entered this profession to do: teach. Right now, many educators feel too much time is spent on testing and test prep. We urge you as district leaders to look at our overall testing requirements, including benchmarks, RTI, and state TCAPS, to streamline where possible so our students' time to learn is protected. We want BCS to be the best place to live, teach, and learn. That vision is only possible if decisions are made in Nashville and here at home that are grounded in the voices of those who teach every day. So tonight, I encourage you to urge the state to listen to educators as this committee continues its work and at the district level, commit to policies that lift up the work of our students and teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rebecca. Next, we would come to comments from our director.
Yeah, I've got a big thank you to the sheriff's office. We have had, our cameras have been available at the 911 center for a while now. They have a new platform. It's called Real-Time Crime Operations Center. So they now have access to our school cameras to be able to go in and take over if there's an emergency situation, whether that be a fire alarm or, you know, something as simple as medical emergency. So the SRO in the school can actually be dealing with it and not trying to get on the cameras and control that. So it's a really, it's a really good partnership we have with the sheriff's office in that. So it's just another layer of security for our schools and our students. Also, I want to give a big shout-out to Coach West from Eagleton, Scott West from Eagleton College and Career. He's the, does the audiovisual production courses over there, and also the students that he's brought. They're getting this real-world experience of how to do a live broadcast in a setting. If you haven't seen, they do a great job with sports broadcasts, graduation. So providing this opportunity in this public setting is great. It also helps us have a better production quality for, you know, people we recognize if they want to go back and show loved ones and not able to attend or see the live stream. It allows for a better production for that. So we just want to thank them and for them taking their time to do that. Also, the banner that was made was made by Eagleton students in Mr. Covey's class. So that's another layer of getting students involved in this. So our goal in doing this was to just improve the quality of how we do recognitions and showcases. And, you know, we look forward to, it's hard to keep up with all the success. We're way behind on recognizing people from last, our teams from last spring. So then I'm hearing the students say all the success that they're having, and I'm starting to get nervous that we're not, we're going to have to have some meetings just to recognize people. So, but great job. Look forward to seeing if any of you guys go to the Battle of the Bell tonight. It's going to be, it's going to be a good game. Look forward to it. So I feel like we're ready for fall break. I think everyone, I was in a classroom today and I asked the kids, are you guys ready for fall break? And they're like, are you sure? I was like, they're like, yeah, yeah. So, and I'm ready to, to be honest with you. So, but it's been a good first quarter and, you know, we're excited. And I'm going to stop talking so we can get to the game.
Thank you, Director Ridge. Next, we would come for comments from the board. Anyone from the board have a comment? I would just end tonight by saying, we recently had opportunity to be at our fall retreat, and the morning session was led by our director and staff, giving us updates and reports on the processes that they put in place and the things that are happening now and through our schools. And I think we as a board were able to attend, we're very encouraged and just excited to see the freshness and the approach and just the team effort being applied. We're very encouraged and excited of what we see in all of you. And we just want to say, as you go on fall break, thank you, and we hope you have a blessed time and be able to settle down and take a little bit of break and rest there and get back fresh and recharged and ready to go again. And we're very appreciative of all of you, okay? Well, thank you all for being here tonight. I'd ask for a motion to adjourn. Have a motion and a second. All in agreement? Let it be known by saying aye. Meeting is adjourned.